Call the meeting order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Cody, you were actually early tonight, huh?
Yeah.
Would you do us roll call of the board, please?
Supervisor Monkey.
Here.
Treasurer Rice.
Here.
Trustee Bills.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Thering.
Here.
Clerk Cody, here.
All present and accounted for. That takes us to item four on the agenda, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Motion to approve by Cody, support by Brown, any discussion?
I'd like to add a discussion about hiring a firm or starting a committee for grant funding.
Is there support for that? I guess you have the motion, you asking it for amendment?
I just want to have a discussion, that's all, a little discussion about it.
So I'm asking those that made the motion, they're okay with that?
We could add that to item number, I see, 11C.
Clerk Cody, trustee Brown?
Does this sound good? Hold on, what did you?
A discussion on the hiring of a firm to do grant proposals for us.
I'll support or amend my motion.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? We have a motion, sorry, yes.
Oh, just wanted people to know, I am sick, so after the vote, I will be high-tealing out of here to limit my exposure to everybody, so.
Appreciate you being here. And I'm also wearing a mask because I've been sick and I'm on the downswing, but anyways, we have a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of 11C to discuss formation of, I heard formation of committee and hiring a firm to help with.
Grant.
Contracts, or grants.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We do have a presentation tonight, we do have a road commissioner here this evening, but he's here for other purposes, he told me, but we do have candidates that, as this board has asked, applied for an open trustee seat, and this is a perfect opportunity to allow those candidates to present, as well as the board to ask questions of those candidates, and I see Mr. Smith getting up already, he's the one person in person, we may have one or two candidates remotely, I do not know yet, and with that, we'll allow you some time to present, introduce yourself, and then, board, you can open up any questions that you want to ask of the various candidates, so we'll go in the order in which, if there's no objection, the order in which the applications were received, Mr. Smith was first, Mr. Henry was second, and Ms. Henry, sorry, and Mr. Lannan was third.
Are you doing this under presentation?
Just the presentation by the candidates and Q and A, and then we'll, appointments is when the board can deliberate and come to any decisions that we choose to come to. And with that, Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone, Brian Smith, 2284 Sandstone Drive. Enough for not to take up too much of your time tonight, you've already seen my resume. Most of you already know me, I've worked with a lot of you, so you kind of know my history here and other places, what I'd like to do is just kind of highlight a couple points that I didn't put in the resume, you know, some things that I feel were great accomplishments when I was at Gratchit County and Union Township. When I first went down to Gratchit County, there was a GIS system where they did a flyover, and county had no money, and Mr. Scher can attest to that, he was in Greater Gratchit down there, it was a very, very poor situation, and so we had this beautiful flyover for GIS that's used for mapping, it's for geographical information systems, and so everybody has it now, but back then it was kind of a newer technology. So what I ended up doing was forming a GIS authority. The county, all 16 townships, all the municipalities, road commission, health department, everybody joined by paying fees to make sure that this was an ongoing entity that could cover parcel split data being entered into the system, new flyovers, et cetera. When I first went down there, now they're poor, but there was a really bad relationship between the county and the townships and everybody, it just seemed to be butting heads, so it was quite an undertaking to get that done, and it was one of the things that I'm very proud of what I did down there, and also, and Mr. Scher was with Greater Gratchit Development, a big attempt was made to create a wind zoning layer for the countywide, and as you can attest, with all the big wind farms that occurred down there, it was successful, getting all the township board, planning commissions, the county planning commission, everybody involved, to adopt a single layer was very incredible, and Don did a heck of a lot of work on that, we did a lot of work on the county, another successful collaboration project by reaching out and engaging and going to as many township boards as I had to to get that going. Now, Union Township, you utilize policy governance manual, I was here when that was first drawn up, I was the one that proposed it to Supervisor Barker back in the day, because I saw that Marion Township was using it, and I thought it was a good way to run the township. Not only that, but also you're utilizing the manager interpretation, I had to write that by scratch, all of them, and I know you probably revised it, and you're going to, because Mark has a different interpretation than what I did, new boards can have different interpretations, so I was the one that drafted all that with approval by the board at the time, and so a lot of work went into that. And then I was also involved in the Greener Mount Pleasant Non-Motorized Plan, got $50,000 from the tribe, and was able to get all the stakeholders in the area to develop the non-motorized plan, where should be sidewalks, where should be bike paths, where should be road diets, where should all that occur in, you know, what locations, and I think it's still being used today, it's on your website, and it's being referred to quite often, another successful story. Bluegrass sidewalks, I didn't know you were working on sidewalks, it was a nightmare. When they expanded bluegrass, they didn't get easements, you know, it is what it is, but having to go there and talk to all those business owners and to get as many as we did was a heck of a accomplishment, I know you're still working on that, but another thing, and Rodney knows, trying to get those easements is not a fun thing to get going, and the Deerfield Road, you know, ever remember how dangerous Deerfield Road used to be? Before it was widened out, before you had the bike path and everything like, there used to be accidents, a lot of rear-ending accidents, that was a multi-year project because we did drains, we did the road, we redid the bike path to make it in there to be connected into the system, so there was a lot of work that I'm very proud of that I did at the township and the county, and this was not me, it was collaboration and teamwork, so what I'm trying to say is that being on a board is collaboration and teamwork, and I think I've shown, when I was on different boards, Cultural Recreation Commission, I was chairman of that for a number of years, I was on the Sacred Heart School Board for six years, vice president, so I'm familiar with the board makeup, but I'm also very familiar with collaboration and teamwork. Now, in the future, what I see for this board, and what I'd like to see, and I'd like to be a part of, continue with the installation of sidewalks where appropriate, don't give up on that, that is so important, and I don't, I didn't realize the importance of sidewalks, yes, it was a safety issue and stuff like that, but as a, as a lifestyle, I didn't realize it until my oldest went off to college, it's like, you start looking at those safety things, you start looking at where the sidewalks are, where can, how can she get from point A to point B and stuff, so you kind of get a new fresh perspective on that. Electric charging stations, I brought that up before, I think it's a great opportunity, ARPA funding, and kind of ironic, on my fourth bullet point in the future, I was talking about grant, collaborative grant position, is there a company out there, or can you collaborate grants with other municipalities, is there something, because at the tribe, I'm very fortunate to have the resources of five grant writers. So I get to come out with a grant, I get to give them the narrative, and they do all the work, and, you know, there's tremendous amount of grants out there, and that position with the added fees could pay for itself if done correctly, so there's a lot of opportunity on that, so I appreciate you bringing that up, kind of fit in with my bullet point here. One thing I would like, even if I'm not selected to this board, after I left, Mark started doing the 10-year projection on the budget, and I think it was a great idea, and what I see that in 2030, there's projected negative $31,000, 2029, $10,000 in the fire fund. Certain assumptions are made, I get it, but please make sure you keep your eyes on those assumptions, make sure you keep your eyes that you're not just reacting to something that's going to happen two years down the road, you did a 1% estimation for property taxes, 6% healthcare, those numbers could go anywhere, but keep your eye on that one because, you know, that's part of, one of the main things is your fiscal responsibility, so I would highly recommend you do that. And lastly, Union Township has so many opportunities, it's a great place to live, your tax rate, 13 miles lower than the city, I mean, it's such a great place to live, but you're right there at the edge, and you're close to everything, and you get the sidewalks you're connected in with the city at that point, so it's like, you're living in the city, but you've got township services, which Water and Sewer is a great job to offer for you there, but so, you know, keep that up, and lastly, what I want to say is, if I'm selected, we're not always going to agree on our votes, but one thing I am, is I'm going to tell you, if it's a big vote, I'm going to tell you why, yes or no, and I'm going to do that, and however you vote, I'm going to respect you for it, you know, that's how you feel, I'm going to respect everybody's vote, I want to be part of a cohesive board, and I think everybody wants to be a cohesive board, and staff, very importantly, wants to have a cohesive board, Mark and the acting managers and whoever want to have a board that is cohesive, that is very important, I think people sometimes forget about that effect on the staff, and so with that, I want to thank you for your time and your consideration for this appointment.
You can stay if you want, in case there's questions that any of the trustees have for you.
Try to get out the questions here.
I'll just open it up, and please, trustee Bills?
I was just curious if you noticed how much we just increased the wages of the employees and the healthcare benefits by a third of a million dollars this last month for the next couple of years, and how do you, you know, how do you mitigate that for budgeting?
You have to put that in the entirety of it, because that is the tool to keep and retain your good employees.
Yeah.
Because you lose an employee, you lose others' time, I mean, you look, just, you know, for example, the Water and Sewer Department, look at how many years of experience people have in that department, you lose that, you're starting out brand-new with somebody that doesn't know the system like they do, and there's a good chance you're going to have to pay that new person higher than the one that's leaving, so that has to be all factored into it, you gotta, nobody likes to do the increases, I know for McGee's, we had to do a $15 minimum to get employees, and so, and that's just a cost of business at this point, to do that, so you can't, you're risking more by not paying what the market is than by trying to, you know, I don't want to say cheap it out, but to pay them less, they're going to leave, because there are so many opportunities out there, especially in the water and sewer areas, for somebody that has the skills that a lot of people in that department does.
Thank you.
I got, I got one question, if I can go.
Sure.
I had a couple of questions here, and you were very thorough, Brian, answered most of them, but I just have one, if, if you were to be elected to the board, and you name some of your priorities, but I guess what would be your top priority that you would, when you sit down in the seat for the first time, your top priority, something that you would be looking at, us, that us board members would want to discuss with you?
Something that I guess is.
I mean, I guess everybody's main priority here is the financial and monitoring Mark's performance as the manager, so those two go without saying, because that should be everybody's goals, me, I'm looking at, there's the inevitable conflict in a lot of municipalities between controlled growth and developers and business owners' rights, where is that magic middle, where is that, are the policies in place, meeting that middle, is it sway, you know, one way or another, I don't know, and I couldn't give you that answer, but that would be one area I'd want to look at, to make sure that there is a balance, because right now you have the, in the master plan, you have the buffer zones, and then you've got the other ones to where Water and Sewer's not going to reach and stuff like that, so that is where your developed areas are, and so I would be wanting to make sure that, first of all, policies as written by the board are being carried out by the staff, because you can't hold the staff accountable without the policies, and you can't blame the management team for carrying out the policies that the board sets, so if you want to change, if you're not happy with something, then the board has to change its global lens, or it has to change the zoning, or has to change the master plan, has to do those other ones to accommodate those competing demands. Thank you.
I hope I answered that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You mentioned policy governance?
Yes, sir.
Can you just articulate, from your perspective, what, if you support it, and my impression is that you do based on conversations we've had, but can you articulate it for the board, why you support policy governance?
I support it 100%, now, some don't like it because of the decisions that are made because of that, but that is not the fault of the governance document, what the governance document, when I first came here, the, the board was taking so much time of me and staff with individual requests and wants and stuff like that, it was, we weren't able to do our job, this right here clearly defined the role of the manager and it defined the role of the board, the board sets the policy, the board monitors the manager's performance, hence that's why the manager's interpretation of the policy is so important, that way, everybody's on the same page, so that way, well, I thought it this way, or I thought it this way, no, you have a very good discussion on your interpretation of what Mark has on these policies, so I think that right there is number one, and number two, it outlines the global lens on what the board is looking for, a healthy lifestyle, an opening and welcoming community, you've got it laid out, that's, that's the first part of your document, and so that is important as well, and so, that'd be the main reasons why I would say that that is such an important document.
Which is a great segue into my second question, it was going to be my third question, but I'll make it the second, because it piggybacks on what you just said, so, what do you see the role is and isn't of a board member?
Set policy, ensure that the manager is carrying out the policy, whether it's him or herself, or the staff, board's role is not to get in the manager's way, not to, and I know at the last meeting you had, you had some, I can't remember the exact one, but you were talking about, everybody kind of found, I think, Mr. Thering talked about how sometimes there's an inevitable, you want to kind of get in a little bit more in the weeds than what you should, and I think everybody kind of agreed to that, and it's hard, it's hard not to, but I think that's one thing that as a board, you got to make sure you don't, and so I think that is very important, to stay out of the manager's way, because how can you hold that person accountable if there's constant interference by individual board members, so I think it's just, it's only fair to the manager and the management team to stay either way, so you can hold that person, that team accountable.
Thank you, so, this is often an easy question, but it's not always that easy to answer, but it's not intended to be a trick question, but, so why did you apply?
When I left, I've always loved local government, and I'll tell you a story that I haven't really told too many times, my dad was a treasurer when I was a senior in high school, a small little township, Lions Township in Ionia County, and he had a heart attack and suffered major strokes, which left him incapacitated, this is February, and so as a treasurer knows, what comes up in March, you got to reconcile with the county. So my mom is going through this process, I'm a senior in high school, and we had to go to the county building, never done this before in my life, and thank God, you know, the county treasurer helped us out a ton. My mom was appointed treasurer for the last two years, so my senior, then my freshman year of college, I came home on weekends, because back in the 80s, you didn't have computers and automated and everything else, people wanted to go pay in cash and go to the bank, and so my mom would go to the bank or different locations, collect the money, and then she would come home, and I would have to take the old green ledger paper, dollar amount person right here, and all the different ones here, and write in a pencil, make sure everything lined up, and so I did that pretty much every weekend during tax season, and I liked it, I didn't like the situation, I didn't like the circumstance, but I liked the involvement into the community, and so I missed that, I missed that, I was 10 years involved in the community, I felt like I made a difference, I thought I made a change, I love what I'm doing now, it's my job, and I wouldn't give that up, but I want to do something where I'm involved more in the community, I'm not on the school board anymore, I'm not on the CRC, I think this is a perfect fit, and I think I have a lot to offer, not only the board, but the management team, if they so request from me, I'm not going to go jump in, but if they request assistance from me, I'd be more than happy to help, and so that would be my reason.
Thank you, bear with me, I'm just looking at my questions, because you answered many of them in your introduction, by the way, in full disclosure, I did meet with Brian yesterday, and I had already asked him, why did you apply in our meeting yesterday, so, but I thought you should hear it, so. Regarding master plan, can you just speak to your view on the importance or not importance of a master plan, and the requirement that the state puts on the townships as far as reviewing and updating those master plans?
Well, as we know, during COVID, the world changes on a dime, so, all your plans that you had, and I even find with my current job, stuff that I had in the pipeline, everything else, prior to March of 2020, that just completely got turned around, so therefore, if you never sit there and adjust your master plan, you're still stuck the old ways, you're not learning the new, what the community is needing, you're not reaching out for the community input, you don't know what they feel about green spaces, sidewalks, the roads, anything else like that, so you need the master plan to guide the township, the manager, Rodney, where they're going to be going in the board on your policies, you need to have that document right there, it's important to lay it out, and this would be your first part of the question, it would be like, determining, and this is where you get into that conflict, everybody knows where, what you have in mind, so if somebody comes in and looks at it, they know, okay, this piece of land right here is in a buffer, so this has certain requirements and limitations, this one's outside the buffer zone, so it's got certain limitations, it not only guides the board, but it guides the citizens, and it guides outside developers from coming in, knowing exactly what they're getting into, so I think it is an important, important document.
One last question, for me at least.
Yes, sir.
It was a two-part question, you've already answered the first part, again through your introduction, you listed accomplishments that you were proud of, can you also articulate disappointments that have happened along the way as far as your involvement in local government, or whether it be in Gratchit or here or whatever?
One thing that, and it's more of a personal level, because it just made me feel bad, is that we were going through that first year of some budget cuts down in Gratchit, and we had went to finance committee to discuss some potential cuts, and I was under the impression that there was going to be no formal action taken at that one, while boom, snap, they eliminated position, person unfortunately found out about it, not through me, and I felt awful, I felt awful as a leader, as this person's boss, that I should have given him the courtesy of saying, this is going to be discussed, and I didn't do it, and I still think about that, on how crappy he felt, and finding out, and then, that I didn't even give him the courtesy of telling him that this is a possibility, so that right there would be like, on a personal level, that I still, I still feel bad to stay above.
Thank you. Board members, other questions?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for the time.
Do we have any of the other applicants remote?
I have someone on there, but I can't tell who it is, it's some numbers.
Okay.
Oh, maybe it's Tim, he's out in the, oh, Jennifer.
And I have Jen.
Okay, but there's somebody else?
But yeah, there is.
Their hand is raised.
They do, okay.
Assuming this is one of our candidates at this point, we'll recognize that person, and if not, then we'll wait and give them opportunity to speak during public comment.
Alright.
So with that, if you're one of our candidates, we'll try to open up the meeting for you, so that you can have the floor.
I've asked to unmute and start video.
Okay, oh, unmuted.
Tim Lannan is here, if you can hear me?
We can, and you have the floor, Mr. Lannan.
Thank you, I do have my camera turned on, but apparently we don't have that connection.
No, we can hear you but cannot see you.
You can hear me clearly?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks, good. So how shall we proceed?
Go ahead and introduce yourself, you take some time to basically introduce yourself to the board and what you would like to accomplish on this board while you're here, and then we'll move, after your introduction, we'll move to Q and A, so if any board members want to ask you questions, they have that opportunity to, does that make sense?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, so the floor is yours.
Thank you, again, Tim Lannan, candidate for the open position of trustee, just to let you know, I'm joining remotely from Rio Negro, New Mexico, and a brief introduction to myself, I came before the board yesterday, so I won't try to be too redundant or gesturing to mind you, I'm a lifelong resident of the City of Mount Pleasant, Union Township, Sacred Heart Academy graduate, CMU graduate, a bachelor of science in education graduate with an associate's degree in player science. I am a retired person at this point, I retired from Bandit Industries as the safety director there, prior work experience, 15 years with the State of Michigan as a fire safety officer, and 15 years in supply chain, electric utility companies, currently still with the City of Mount Pleasant as a firefighter, medical first responder, in my 31st year. In regards to the township board, the purpose of the township board is to be responsible for all the township money, that is our objective as the board. Township responsibilities at their narrowest, uh, level are to assess real property and personal property, administer elections, and handle the tax collections. So with that in mind, um, as, as a board member for fif- for twelve years, for the union, for the Charge of Township, the union, I was on the board between the years of 2008, I was elected, nearly through 2020. To talk about things I experienced as a trustee, accomplishments, accomplishments that, uh, I'm proud of to have been involved with, I have about eleven listed. And first of all, a very important thing at that point in time in 2008, which I feel we have virtually overcome, was the thought of the good old boy system and township or city mentality. There was a deep rooted, uh, thought with some folks that, uh, that's how the system operated. But through focused efforts and actions taken, I believe we are nearly ninety-nine percent past that. Very proud of that. Very proud to have been involved in adopting policy governance as the board policy manual which John Barker brought to us, the theory by John Carver on policy governance. And the idea behind that was, uh, virtually, I've been criticized ninety percent of boards, committees, groups trying to accomplish things. Had a very hard time coming together and efficiently, effectively, and with good value accomplishing the goals they'd set out. But John Carver, through policy governance, had laid out a matrix, uh, plan that can be followed and be followed successfully. So we, uh, learned about it, and, uh, decided that John Barker did bring a very valuable tool that could be quite valuable to the board to oversee the township. Very proud of that. Very proud to have been involved in the hiring of manager Mark Stuldrad. Also prioritizing intergovernmental cooperation and citizen group efforts. We really look forward to finding opportunities as a township board to collaborate with other governmental entities or other citizen groups to accomplish things that, uh, become very fiscally efficient, and you can share resources. Generally, the, the plan is stronger with the collaboration. And, uh, it's good for the region, not just the township. We often, we often like to look at, uh, our, our region as a whole, eliminating boundaries. You know, just creating boundaries and, and thoughts and ideas and health, safety, and well-being, trustee boundary lines to the whole region. So I try to work thinking in that manner. Ensuring township economic strength, solid budget planning and monitoring, obviously is something I'm very proud of. To this day, in a good economic position, in my twelve years on the board, we work, uh, quite diligently to ensure our budgeting is solid, we're monitoring it, and our taxpayers are not overpaying and receiving the benefits, the community that they desire. Also very proud of citizen communication. Through survey inputs we put out to, to the citizens, the wrench we've had to get citizen input on things like master plan, recreation plan. And, uh, that's very important. However, I will note, uh, when I talk about frustrations, you're gonna see citizen communication and citizen linkage come up again. Been very proud to be part of the dog park joint adventure between the friends of the dog park and the township. Yeah, we came together and made that happen. I fortunately drive by the dog park several times a day in close proximity to my home. And the, uh, the, the people networking that goes on, you know, the, the people said, you know, the, the dog park is not for dogs as much as it is for the dog owners. It, it's a terrific social gathering place, and I'm just thrilled every time I go by it because it is heavily used. Very, uh, to be able to say that the pager rating improvements of our roads has, uh, gone up significantly through my time on the board. And, uh, learning about that through the collaboration with the County Road Commission. We all got an education about roads, road conditions, the cost of roads, the more significant cost of not taking care of roads and letting them go into a state of disrepair. So we work closely with the County Road Commission to understand how we can most effectively help the, uh, rest roads with the, uh, money we have. Very proud of, uh, priori- prioritizing construction and improvements of sidewalks and non-motor pathways, both locally and regionally. However, I'll get into frustrations there as well, but, uh, we added sidewalks, we maintain sidewalks. Not only locally, but regionally, you know, how the importance of sidewalks. And what it does to, uh, ensure our citizens can live above and beyond just, uh, meeting their daily needs. Sidewalks and pathways will directly, uh, will affect the well-being of our citizens. And it's, uh, in communities that thrive, pathways is so important to the community. Very proud of, uh, the master plan update of 2018. It is time to be looking at five-year review for the update. And it is very important to do that, uh, not only just because it's statutorily required, but it's a tool that needs to be talked about to help the planning commission do their job, to help the board, the firm, what do you get, ordinances, updates. As, uh, we are in a dynamic environment, and we always need to be relevant with our policies and ordinances. And lastly, I'll mention, I'm very proud to have been on the board, publicly supported, the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act, which I'm afraid that is welcoming to all, and that, uh, we do not discriminate. To mention some frustrations I've had, uh, the list is much shorter, but, uh, it does still frustrate me that our, our sidewalk, non-motorized pathway, major projects still are not necessarily fully completed. Concerns are the dangers to the pedestrians, uh, as well as easement difficulties. But I see a real need for completing and adding sidewalks, to name a few roads. Isabella Road, Broomfield Road, Bluegrass, Crawford, Burriian Road, River Road, and, and others. If Isabella on the West Island Road, including Broadway and going past the Renaissance Center, there is a path worn deep into the earth and, uh, no sidewalk, and it's heavily used. And so important in my mind, need to continue on for the safety and well-being of the citizens. Another area that I must be satisfied with, and we've talked about it over a long period of time, but that is getting stronger with, uh, our owner linkage with the citizens. Finding opportunities for, um, input and access for our citizens are to communicate with, with the board. Whether it be, you know, developing newsletters, township website, or social media connections. We can represent the citizens. You know, there's seven board members at the table, but you're not there representing yourself, you're, you're representing the citizens of the township. And so without a, a strong and linkage and an accessible linkage where you can talk often in real time, we're missing something there. So I'd like to, uh, that, that's been a frustration. And, uh, one last thing would be, I thought we were at ninety-nine percent there, but on the key, then somebody will come up with the good old boy system and history of the township versus the city. And so, uh, always, I always try to, uh, inform that, uh, you know, that, that story's in the past, we have moved so far beyond that. So with that, I'll take a break, and, uh, question pronounced time for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open it up to the floor, so have at it.
Sure. Mr. Lanin, this is Trustee Brown. I got a question for you.
Thank you.
Um, and I'm gonna kinda keep my questions just the same as I've had for the other applicant. You were very thorough in your introduction, I appreciate that, cause you answered several, uh, of the questions, but, and pretty much this one too. But I am gonna ask it. If you were to be elected to this board, your number one priority that you could see yourself focusing on and bringing attention to the board members would be what?
Well, for me, most importantly, uh, to get out of the blocks and, uh, be an important, uh, member of the team, of the board, would be to thoroughly understand what the current board's ends are. What you have laid out, to reaching those ends, timeframes on them, budgets associated with them, and, uh, buy into those ends, so I can work diligently as a board member to help accomplish what the board has chosen as their high-level goals.
Thank you. One other question that the past applicant answered before I could even ask it, but I'm gonna ask this one to you. Is there any, anything not reflected in your application that you believe makes you especially qualified to be a trustee? Or have you covered everything?
Well, I'm old. I've been around a long time. I have learned from experiences, work experiences, and I'm willing to try to make, uh, connections, connect the dots. Learn something from one situation, understand how you can transfer that learning to another situation. Virtually every time there's a conversation, the conversation involves change of some sort. We don't talk so much just to talk. We talk so we can improve, change, modernize, whatever it may be. So I try to not have fragmented, uh, thoughts. I, I try to understand each connection, each networking, each, uh, conversation, and how one relates to another. So kind of a continuum. Beyond that, I would just like to tell you that I'm very interested in the well-being of people. Their health, their safety, their what, their mental well-being, uh, their ability for them to be themselves. And this is in my resume, but, um, you know, I designated thirty-one years of my life as a firefighter, medical first responder to our community, the city, and the township. And there's a lot more to it than maybe putting out a fire or putting a mandate on someone. A lot of it is working, you're seeing people at their worst time. And when people are at their worst time, I'll just say a house fire, and the fire department is doing a good job, the firefighters are at their best. So, so that's quite a difference. And when you're at your best and you're seeing people at their worst, figuring out how to comfort them so they can try and understand and get through the tragedy they experienced. Well, kind of people person, this, this part of my interest to serve on the board, I just really like it. I like the networking with board members, like looking to the community and trying to talk to the board about what the community I speak with have a desire to see. I'll, I'll bear.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lanin. That was an excellent answer, and I do wanna say thank you for your service as a firefighter. Uh, we, we, we appreciate that because you cover our territory. Thank you very much.
Thoroughly, but my pleasure.
Coming from another twenty-year veteran firefighter, we appreciate it very much. That's all I have. Questions?
Tim, this is Connie Lee Bills. Uh, we know each other. And, uh, I just wanted to ask you, uh, what do you, in your, in your dealings with the public so far in the last few years, have you, have you got any ideas about how the township should spend the ARPA money that we have left? About a million dollars?
A million dollars?
Yeah.
Sounds like a lot of money. Like municipalities could burn through a million dollars relatively easily. You could probably look around us and identify five million dollars that, uh... You know, as we consider whatever the options are, what our end goals will be, how we utilize that money, whether we look at something outside of what we've really discussed, or to take, uh, to do that link maker, uh, future fiscal situation better, is all up for discussion. I, I do know you, you can't be positioned very well if you think I have a million dollars, I can create this new thing that possibly will have ongoing costs. And, uh, think I'm ahead of the game. There's gonna be additional expenditures that just reoccur. Being cognizant of that is important. You know, I hope that you, what our end goals, our, our global statement is, which talks about community well-being, prosperity, update diversities of economy, culture, and... community well-being, prosperity, update diversities of economy, culture, and social affiliation, safety, health, natural environment, commerce, I think we really need to make sure whatever the ARPA funds are spent on, pluck on several of those topics that have the highest level of ends that the board are shooting. Kind of sidestep your question about giving you an answer to what you should spend your money on.
That's okay.
But I gave you kind of some constraints.
Yeah.
To work again.
Okay. And also, with regard to hearing from the ownership, how often do you think that should be done?
Every day. We're talking about every day amongst the citizens. You know, you can't get trapped into maybe talking with someone who, you know, just talks a lot and doesn't have a lot of value in what they say. You know, you can't look at an individual, you gotta talk to the community and get the feel for what's going on community-wide, not being, you know, pigeonholed into a smaller slice or segment, but really consider what the community whole has to say. But I think the ownership linkage, as we call it, is utmost important. And one of my frustrations was, we've talked about it, that we're not doing a good enough job on the opportunities and access that the citizens will take advantage of. We say, yeah, come to the meeting, you know, it's winter, it's dark, I put in a hard day's work, and you get three minutes to listen to me.
Yeah.
So figuring out what our citizens will truly utilize, we need to be working.
Thank you. And thank you for your application, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, Mr. Landon, this is Brian Milky. Kind of the same questions as Mr. Smith that I gave, mostly. I had questions that I had planned on asking everyone, but each of you answered those in some respect through other questions or your presentation. But very briefly, on policy governance, and with you, I happen to know that you're a supporter of policy governance, can you just articulate why you're a supporter of policy governance?
I found when we had the opportunity to learn about it, or to us, that it really appeared that it would be a structure that would allow fairness, not only as a board member, but as an administrator, as a department head, a staff member, do their job to know who they're working for.
Very good, thank.
The idea that the constraints are in place that say you can't do this, you can't cross this line, but you have the ability to be as creative as you want in accomplishing your job, and as long as you are accomplishing what is pronounced of you, there's a thousand different ways to get that end result in the solution you're looking for. I totally appreciate that, and it has been expressed by our manager and the department head that policy governance is what helps seal the deal for them to accept employment with the township.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Looking at my notes here, bear with me. Regarding master plan, can you discuss your feelings on the master plan process as far as importance or not importance, and the fact that there's a state requirement to review and possibly update that on a five-year cycle? You did mention that briefly earlier, but can you just re-articulate why you feel the way you do and what you feel?
Sure, I certainly believe master plan is very important, the statutory requirement to review is very important. It's a mechanism to keep you relevant, update, actually manage your budget better. It's so important for the master plan to be reviewed, whether it's just gonna be a little tweak, it's not necessarily need to be rewritten, but it needs to be reviewed. And I think it's so important for our planning commission to see what the updates will be, so that they can be relevant as discussion regarding policy and ordinance updates goes, land use goes, future land use, smart development. So five years is a considerable amount of time when you think about a day-to-day, changes take place, without a review and modifications as needed every five years. I think as a township, we would fall behind and truly be wasting some taxpayer money.
Thank you. What do you see the role is and is not for being a board member? Mr. Landon?
As a board member, it is our duty, responsible for all township money. It is our duty as board members to look at the direction of the township, how it needs to go to meet the citizens' demands, from a very high level. The board works together to determine those global ends, the high-level ends, and set the direction as expected. Doing that while instructing the township manager on what our desires are. It's up to the manager to determine how that person will accomplish those.
Very good, thank you. Oh, go ahead.
I'd just like to mention, it's also, since the board's connection with the staff is solely through the township manager, it eliminates any board member going to any staff member, any department head, and, you know, trying to direct a staff member who is not under their direction, or receives some sort of help or something from a staff member. So it keeps it very clear on who supervises who, so there's zero conflict or understanding from all staff members who they report to.
Thank you. And very briefly, last question from me at least, why did you apply?
Well, I saw that there was a need. The position became available, with Trustee Houk decided to take a different service opportunity that came to him and the seat opened, and so we had a need. And I know that it's difficult to get people to step up and volunteer for open positions on the board. I thoroughly enjoyed my twelve years on the board. I have, I believe, institutional wisdom that is still relevant, ends that we worked together on, and some of them that are still in process, being continued to be with them. Although it's nice to see things come to fruition, and heartily would like to continue to serve. I have more time now than I've ever had, since I'm not chained down to a forty-hour job, which all know a forty-hour job, you put in more than forty hours, and then you get up and get ready for it, and by the time you come home and get it out of your head, there's a lot more. I just feel relevant, available, and excited that there was an opportunity that is of high interest to me.
Thank you. Anybody else?
All set, sir.
Mr. Landon, thank you for your time. I appreciate you being able to attend despite being on vacation.
My pleasure.
Have fun.
Thank you.
So Margie Henry was the other applicant that we had, I'm assuming we don't have anybody remote?
She said she doesn't have internet on her application, so I doubt that she's, maybe she could call in, I don't know.
Okay.
The only other person on there is Jennifer, and that's.
Okay, thank you. So with that, that moves us on our agenda then. We have no public hearings tonight, so that brings us to item seven on the agenda, public comment. Public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. And I'm assuming there's a few individuals here that wanna speak about this open seat. That is considered to be on the agenda, it's part of the board appointments. So please limit your comments to three minutes, state your name and address for the record if you choose to address the public. And with that, at eight, ten PM, we'll open up public comment.
I'm gunning twenty-two seventy East Brookfield. I'm not sure, in your new business, you've got, A, is the second reading and adoption of the two thousand twenty-two zoning ordinance tax amendments. I don't know if there's no more opportunity to discuss or in a public hearing format on this, correct?
On the zoning ordinance, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, you could do that now.
I'm gonna do it now. So I noticed one thing in the description of the item that's been bothering me for, the first time I saw it was last meeting, it's been bothering me for the last couple of weeks. I just wanted some clarification, so when you do come to that, hopefully this can get addressed. And it's in the description, as part of the updates, a clarification is also proposed to be made related to the timing of application or appeal for any land use, structure, or other project that is subject by provision of this ordinance to review in action or interpretation by the planning commission or zoning administrator. An application to the zoning board of appeals shall only be accepted for review in public hearing after the conclusion of that administrative process. So my take is, is this is kind of a reaction to the bribe church from December ZBA, where they had asked for an interpretation. And that's the only thing that I can kind of, what I wanna make sure of is, is that we're not requiring, say, an organization or individual to have to go to the planning commission with a plan in order to get an answer. They were just simply asking for interpretation of whether or not the items that they wanted to accomplish, or the goals that they had for their project ultimately, would be available to them on that parcel, which the ZBA basically decided that everything that they wanted to do was allowable except for one thing of the recreation. So to have to put a plan together and all the thousands that it would cost to do that before you purchase a property, which is what they were doing, was trying to just basically clarify things, so they could actually purchase the property and finalize. So I don't wanna take that ability away from the general public, and so I just wanna make sure that that isn't referring to the fact that I wanna maybe do this over here down the street, that I'm not quite sure. You know, and in this case, it was presented to the economic development director, Ju, and they had to wait all the way until December because of delays. It caused them to hire an attorney, and it was a mess. So that, number one. Number two, administrative process going through your zoning ordinance, I don't see what the definition is of administrative process. So I think that there needs to be a clarification of what exactly administrative process is. Is there a time limit on administrative process, or can it drag out for six months, eight months, or a year? So I'd like to have those two questions answered if I may. Thank you.
Thank you. The floor is open.
So about thirteen oh four East Baseline, we're gonna have a long meeting tonight because of me.
Thanks a lot.
When I got asked to run for the Disfalt County Growth Commission back in March of last year, I thought about it for two or three weeks, whether I wanted to do it or not. Well, when I decided to do it, I thought, who could replace me on this board? I thought Lon hired about it, and I called Brian Smith. I told Brian, the day I turned my paperwork into the copy building to run for the position, told him I was running for that, and I told him I thought I had a good shot of getting on. I asked him if he'd be interested in taking or applying for the position if I were to get elected. I'm happy he did, I think he's, I don't need to tell you he's qualified, you guys heard all those qualifications. Like I said, Lon hired about it, I think he's the best. Finally, I'll be brief here, finally, I was elected to this board in two thousand sixteen, two thousand twenty as a Republican. I know a lot of times where boards like this, it's not about being a Republican or a Democrat. But in two thousand nineteen, there was a member of this board that was a Democrat, and it was hammered into us that night that he was a Democrat, he was residing, and, because he moved out of the district, and that a Democrat should replace a Democrat. Well, if we wanna hold along the same party lines, then I feel a Republican should be replaced with a Republican. It will also help on the elections commission, there's gotta be a Democrat and a Republican on the elections commission. So I've talked to a few of you guys about Brian, there's no sense talking anymore about him. We obviously know he's the best candidate. He's gonna help the staff out, there'll be a liaison with the tribe, there'll be a liaison with the city. I didn't even really know him until two thousand twenty, when he decided to run for this board. Him and I went around a couple of subdivisions together, but I learned more about him tonight than I did prior to tonight. So I just think he's the best candidate for the position. I can't say I missed the night meetings, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Houk. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Don Scher. No longer a township resident, I live at sixty-seven, sixty-eight Salvation, just south of the township. But for thirty-three years, I did live right on this corner. Phenomenal place to raise a family, I had two kids, enjoyed every minute. We moved because I needed one floor and less stairs.
Yeah.
We just didn't find the opportunity, unfortunately, almost in that way. I have a comment not about individuals, because I believe we've got some really qualified people who both ran for the office in the first place and are applying for selection at this time. But I did wanna have a note and emphasize to you folks, my observations from almost forty years of working in townships, almost exclusively rural areas, and I did for thirty-four years run Greater Gresham Development while I lived here for working Gresham Township. and I did for thirty-four years run Greater Gresham Development while I lived here from working in Gresham Township. I believe in the wider value of the region as a Hinkin' community, as a community where we all want to live and fight. And we had eight pretty good candidates in the election. And if I get the numbers correctly, we've got about seventy-five hundred voters in the township. We had about a sixty percent turnout. That means we had about forty-five hundred actual voters. And as we all know, unfortunately, people don't always look at down ballot positions or issues that are on the ballot. So that leaves us with, you know, a group of the top five people that were only separated by two, not quite two and a half percent difference in voting, which tells me that the people who actually did vote for the people on the board felt pretty good about all of them. And they... It's a great compliment to this board and to the people paying attention in the township voting, because they feel pretty good about what's going on. You may not have the latest because of COVID issues and the other sorts of things, like master plan needs updating. I did work on quite a few master plans through my life. And I'll point out, Brian did a kind of a job, and those things when we were working together, and we did for quite a period of time. But my point is really, the voters voted overwhelmingly for a swamp of political. I would advocate that you think about not jumping out of the voters' recommendations by voting and go down the line. You got one opening, pick the next person. You got two openings, pick the next person. We are so close to what happened in November, that the seating of this board is a new entity. Regardless of the qualifications, people, Kim, Brian, they're qualified. Go down. If we really want to jump outside of those, even though it's a small margin, that's okay.
Thank you.
Bu Zhou, condition constant, Keshet Adamun, Don Monik. My name is Elise. I live at four zero seven five Isabella, Union Township. I've come to speak in favor of Mr. Smith. He doesn't know me personally, but I wanted to come and say he has done great things east of the freeway, and I think Union would be wise to not pass him up in the opportunity to have him on our side as a township. I am asking we not allow politics on a national level to rob us of a good foundation here locally. I think what we have for our community is more important than what's going on outside of our community. What Mr. Smith is, is a good bridge with strong connections and fresh ideas. His perspective is unique, valuable, and experienced. And I want to add that Mr. Smith has done great things for us despite not being a lifelong resident of the reservation. He... His life experience is what's made him so valuable, and he's clearly well qualified, and I hope he's chosen first place then. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have anybody new in the virtual. Anybody else like to come forward? Seeing none, we'll close public comment at eight twenty-two. And I have to make an apology. Can we take a two-minute recess? Is the board opposed to that?
No.
No.
All right. Or we recess for about two to three minutes? I was trying to let him finish. I was trying to let him finish, because we're not on hard time, but we do want to get Treasurer Rice back home in bed. We'll resume session at eight twenty-seven PM. I wasn't sure, and I almost asked the board if they cared about... We have some appointments to the planning commission we need to do, and obviously the one we've been discussing this evening already with the presentations is ideally making a decision regarding the open trustee spot. And I know Treasurer Rice felt the need to be here despite her feeling so bad, in particular probably with the trustee seat. So I think I'll start with that, if that's okay.
Yeah, that would be great.
And I just want to give some background on this, too. State law requires that the empty seat we have gets filled. It is put upon us to do just that or allow the Board of County Election Commissioners to pick our residents. State law, Michigan Code one six eight dot three seven zero says, "If a vacancy occurs in an elective or appointed township office, the vacancy must be filled by appointment by the township board, and the individual appointed should hold the office for the remainder of the unexpired term." There are exceptions to that. If it's done, if the vacancy is early in the process, then an election is held. But in this case, with the time that we have, whoever gets appointed, whether we do it or the Board of County Election Commissioners, it is for the rest of the term. There is no other guidance in Michigan code as to how a board should make that appointment other than the appointed person must be a registered voter in the township. The state leaves how or whom is to be appointed completely up to our discretion. I've served in one capacity or another on at least three boards. Each board has its own personality, agenda, and governance practices. Each board governs on its own accord, but there are policies that provide some consistency across boards. Policy governance is an example of that in this township. This board and the previous two boards were presented with the responsibility of filling a vacant seat. So this is the third time in a row in three terms. I looked for any policy from the past that we could use as guidance in filling a vacant seat. None exists that I can find. Two boards ago, a seat became vacant... A seat became vacant because the member resigned. The member was still eligible to serve but chose not to. That position was filled quickly. The supervisor told the Board of twenty-twelve that he had someone in mind who he felt would do a good job. The supervisor nominated that person, and the person was voted in unanimously. It was a very simple and quick process. In that case, it was early enough in the term that the election was later held, and the voters replaced that appointed person with Treasurer Rice, who still sits in that seat. State law does not give us that same luxury of ultimately going to an election because of how late we are in the term of when the vacancy came. The previous board of twenty-sixteen, already referred to tonight, had a vacancy because a member was no longer eligible to serve. Unlike the twenty-twelve board's vacancy appointment, the twenty-sixteen board decided to request applications and go through kind of a presentation slash interview process, very similar to what this board has done tonight. The seat was vacated by an elected Democrat, and in the next in line in votes for trustee in that case in the previous election was a Democrat. None of the applicants for the vacant seat had run in the previous primary and general election. That board articulated that being a Democrat was an important quality for appointment. I cannot speak to the exact reasoning for this. I was not a board member at the time, but it certainly was a quality they were looking for. Each applicant was asked what party they were, and every one of those answered that at least locally they were a Democrat. Those applicants were Robert Bacon, who now serves on our EDA board, Taylor Sheehan Stall, Brian Smith, James Thering, and myself. Remember being there, right? Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I didn't want to be there. I just don't remember everybody saying they were a Democrat.
They did, because I found it interesting. The previous time, a seat became vacant was because the person became ineligible to serve. This time, the vacancy occurred because the person chose to run for another office. Both political parties have reached out to me about their ideas of how this should all go down, and I'm assuming they've probably reached out to you. Vacating an elected position for another position should never be an excuse for a political party to try to stack seats. That is undemocratic, nor should serving in a local office ever be about party allegiance. If any of us felt our duty was to a political party before our duty to serve Union Township, then those persons should resign right now. You cannot serve a party first and be able to follow your oath of office. I understand that no matter what we do, there are special interest groups out there that will be unhappy. They've all made that very clear. It is not their responsibility. It's ours. So I don't care what the voices in the different political parties, special interest groups feel we should do. What I do care is what the voters of Union Township feel we should do. Our oath is to uphold the Constitution and represent the people of this township. In the previous vacancy, there were a number of applicants. Not one candidate was in the previous primary and general election. This time, every applicant was a candidate in the previous election. Two of them have experience as trustee in Union Township, the other, a previous manager of Union Township, who resigned shortly before the previous board took their oaths. This decision that we have is a huge responsibility, and it will shape the decisions of this board for the next two years. I do not enjoy having to make this decision, and I know some of the other board members have expressed anxiety over this. This is supposed to be a democratic decision made by the voters of the Union Township. That's how it's supposed to work. While I wish we'd received more applications, and some have expressed that, I do feel fortunate that all the applications were from candidates that ran for this open seat just two years ago. We know exactly how the voters spoke about these three candidates. One of our board members approached me this summer about the potential vacancy. This member proposed the idea that we need to hear what the voters said and to pick the person next in line with regards to the votes. That conversation has stuck with me. While I'm sure we all have our own perceptions of the candidates, that has no weight with me despite knowing each of them fairly well and the fact that I have worked with each of them, I think we're blessed to have some really phenomenal candidates. What does have weight for me is the voters' desire. They have told us their desire through an election, a process that is cherished, part of the idea of self-governing, and it is the foundation for this great country we're all blessed to participate in. A time when our own elections are being challenged and democracy is under assault, we have the opportunity and the responsibility to speak loudly with regards to the trust we put in our own elections by abiding by what the voters have already said. I cannot fathom how we can put our own interests above the voters. And that's why I have sat at your tables the previous election results. And I've had my say. And with that, are you raising your hand?
Sure. I'm pretty sure I can express my position any better or any clearer than Supervisor Milkie has just laid out for us tonight, each and every one of us. But I'm gonna try. I wrote something down, and I know I've been a couple of years on this board, and I have never wrote anything down. I've always been able to talk freely from my heart, but this is very important, very important to me. So I wrote this down, and I'm gonna read through this, all right? It might be tempting to use this opportunity to support an applicant who we know shares our own political views or someone we have a personal relationship with, or for any number of other reasons. But for me, I just have too much respect for the voters of this township to do anything other than support their expressed will. It is our obligation to them. Each of us at this table is here because the voters of Union Township decided we should be the ones to serve. How can any of us now, in good conscience, argue against filling this vacancy with the voter's next candidate of choice? The numbers are in front of us. We don't have to guess who the people want to serve our community. We are here to replace... Who are we to replace the voter's choice with our personal choice? It's our obligation to honor their will, their votes, and fill this vacancy using the results of the last election. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Clerk Cody.
I would like to nominate Brian Smith for the next trustee position, expiring eleven twenty twenty... eleven twenty twenty twenty-four.
I second.
We have a motion by Cody, support by Thering. Discussion?
One thing I would like to say is, and it's been mentioned tonight, elections. If you look at the election committee, you're required to have a Democrat and a Republican, if I am not mistaken, for the election committee, for signing documents.
It's not required, but you have to have a Republican and Democrat sign everything, like, yeah.
Okay. And it just... I get where you guys are coming from completely. I think we are so honored to have, you know, amazing candidates for this, and they're people I respect, and it just... people I respect, and it just, I appreciate that. The problem I have is, you know, we are a complete Democratic board. I get it, local government, you know, but we also need to look at, there are different ideas, different views that each individual has. And having that difference of opinion is also very important because people think of things that we might not think about. Um, I have always tried to look at, okay, yes, a Democrat was voted into office, fill it with a Democratic seat. A Republican was voted into office, fill it with a Republican seat, just because that's, that's what was voted on. Um, you guys make great points on, you know, the, how, um, how the people voted. And, and I completely understand where you're coming from in that, so I can see that. And, and I've, I've reached out to multiple people here, and so they know my opinion, but, um, you know, I, I worked with Brian many years. He was my deputy, you know, and I think he would do a great job as a trustee, um, just as I think Tim would or Margie. I personally would like to see that seat filled with a Republican, as a Republican was voted into that seat to begin with, and that is my opinion on that.
So with that in mind, the next in line with votes, the Republican would be Margie Henry.
And I understand that. Um, we have tried reaching out to Margie multiple times. Um, I don't know about you guys, but I didn't hear anything back from Margie. She didn't show up to the meeting. And, um, in my opinion, actions speak volumes. You know, Mr. Smith has come to multiple of these meetings. Um, he has responded back when asked questions, and so, um, having not heard from Margie, I, I can't, I can't vote for her because she hasn't responded when we tried reaching out, so.
Trustee Bills.
I didn't even consider, honestly, party affiliation in my decision because I wanna, I'm cut and dry. I wanna see where, where your background is, I wanna see what kinda person you are, and I think, uh, Mr. Smith has demonstrated for me that, uh, that he's the better, uh, person for me to vote for, so that's what I'm gonna do.
I'm, I'm satisfied. Uh, you know, all three candidates are more than qualified, have served this township in one form or another. It's by, if we appoint Mr. Smith as trustee, it's no reflection on any of the other candidates and their qualifications. I just, I would like to see Mr. Smith as the appointed trustee based on his qualifications.
And I, oh, I was gonna say, and I completely agree. The township cannot lose in this instance, we've had great applicants, so.
Who've served with?
Who have served multiple times, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I would agree.
Many, many years of service. Yes, many, many years of service in all three of these candidates.
I'm, I'm kinda thrilled, and I tried to express that earlier, that, um, all three candidates could jump in and contribute right away, and, and that is, we're blessed to have that opportunity. I, I just cannot go against what the voters said very clearly. It, it's not like a situation where, uh, none of the applicants ran in the previous election. It, this is pretty clear, and it's not even close when you look at the numbers.
It's taken into consideration some of the things that were mentioned when you and I were applying, uh, sat up there, and, um, it was, uh, one of the trustees came right out and said, "The voters put a Democrat in that seat, so therefore, I wanna put a Democrat in that seat." And specifically said, if it was, and it just so happens to be trustee Houck's seat, who's a Republican, if it was a Republican, that that trustee said they would not vote for a Democrat. And I, I, that is the will of the voters. The will of the voters did put someone who is Republican. Now, I'm not, I'm not choosing Mr. Smith because he's a Republican, I'm choosing Mr. Smith because of his qualifications. He just happens to be a Republican.
Yeah.
And I can appreciate that, because I don't think party should matter, and I, I think, um, the past trustee, trustee, Commissioner Houck, excuse me, um, illustrated that, and I, i- if, if it's about party locally, then, um, you shouldn't be here.
Right.
I just, I, th- this was a unique situation where all three applicants were the next three in line in the election, and I just, I, I can't see myself going against the will of the voters.
Yes, the democratic process means a tremendous amount, whether you're on a trustee, board, um, or, or running for House or Senate. It, it, it is the will of the people, and, uh, it's nothing against Mr. Smith, or Mr. Lannan, or, or any of them. Um, I like them all, I've lived here my entire life. Um, it is the will of the people. That's who put me here, and I respect that, and I respect the vote of the people.
I agree.
And that's, that's where I am.
Well, I don't feel like I'm disrespecting the citizens. I, I don't feel that.
Well, they voted.
May I say something, please?
Clerk Cody.
On this factual sheet, it doesn't show all your information. A lot of people voted straight ticket, and there's more Democrats than Republicans in Union Township. So, I mean, if you had how many people voted the straight ticket, how many people voted this, if you had all that information on there, but it doesn't. So it's like, you got, I mean...
So you mean, you mean this isn't the number of votes I got? Is that what you're doing?
Yeah, no, it is.
I mean, you did, but straight ticket, so there was four people on one side, four people on the other side, or...
If we had it to do over again, though, and Bill Houck wasn't running, and Margie Henry and Brian Smith were the two Republicans, uh, they would've voted for one of them.
Yep.
Okay, the Republicans that voted for, for Bill Houck would've voted for one of them. Straight ticket.
So it's hard to go by this factual, I mean, I'm, I just think he's the better candidate for the position.
Twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent of our, the US aligns with one party or the other. The other fifty percent are independents and intend to vote split ticket. So I...
Not in twenty twenty, they didn't.
Yeah.
[laughing].
What do you mean?
Yeah, what do you mean?
They didn't, they didn't vote split ticket.
How do you know?
I know they did.
There's factual information backing that, like, it shows how many people voted straight ticket. Like, on, I think it's the county website, I don't know if they still have it on there, I have no idea. But I'm just saying, all the information isn't on here, and I'm not going by this sheet.
Yeah, well...
So, I mean, I know you did your research and stuff, but not in, like I said, I think he's the better candidate, and that's what I'm going with.
I think we have four votes for him, so I'd like to call the vote.
Okay.
It has to be roll call.
That's fine. Clerk Cody, uh, this is a motion to appoint Mr. Brian Smith to the Board of Trustees.
Supervisor Milky.
No.
Clerk Cody, yes. Treasurer Rice.
Yes.
Trustee Bills.
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
No.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mr. Smith, congratulations. By, by the way, we are in a, a unique situation where, um, we're prepared to seat you if you're prepared yourself, provided our clerk could do a swearing in.
Let's not do that tonight, can we?
I just wanted to offer it to the board.
I would, uh, be uncomfortable voting right now as being not, not prepared for the packet and taking a personal vote on something. I don't think it would be appropriate right now, but I appreciate the, uh, offer.
Okay, awesome.
But if you wanna hang out until after the meeting, I swear you won't.
Um, ju- just a comment, um, I did meet with, with Mr. Smith yesterday, I articulated that already. I, I have my reasons, uh, that are articulated for why I didn't support Mr. Smith, um, but I'm excited for you to join us, and I look forward to working with you. As I, I wasn't blowing smoke, I think all of our candidates, uh, brought a lot to the table, and I'm anxious to see what you bring.
With that, I apologize, I need to go home.
Eight forty-nine.
So, um, thank you guys, and, um, yeah.
See you in a month.
And, and, and I apologize, Mr. Lannan, for having to step out a minute, but...
Hope you feel better.
I'm trying. When there's five-in-one households and something goes around, you tend to get it multiple times when you take care of them, so.
Give me just one minute.
And, and please, yes, please. I'm very sorry.
Oh, that's nice.
I'm sorry.
You're, you're great.
I told her to.
Oh, my God.
She's good. I'm so sorry.
So, I, I neglected to follow some of my notes earlier, so I'm gonna curl back on an issue. We, we did have a email that I shared with the board from, uh, Mr. Gene Haymaker, and I wanna make sure that that gets put in the packet in correspondence, because he asked that it be.
Okay.
So if, if, um, I'll get you that email and we'll republish the packet, if that's okay?
Yep.
I, I didn't wanna neglect that. And Mr. Haymaker is offering, um, argument that the seat, essentially the seat should be replaced with, uh, like, party.
Correct.
Okay, that brings us to Planning Commission.
I'm really sorry. I know, that was unnecessary.
I'm gonna get a gas mask.
It was not, like, I can't get sick right now.
Take it easy.
I don't have time.
Okay.
Um, that, that brings us to Planning Commission. Um, we have, uh, three open spots, um, two, two individuals, uh, reapplying, uh, the Chair, Phil Squattrito, and, uh, so second term request by, uh, Commissioner Lap, Jessica Lap. And then we had two other applications, and with that, um, I don't know why they put this on the supervisor, but the law says I have to do the nomination process. So with that, I would like to nominate Phil Squattrito back to the Planning Commission.
Support. Sorry, I worked with him, he did a great...
Nomination by the supervisor, um, support by Clerk Cody, uh, any discussion?
My arms are, I don't have a jacket on. I worked with him, I did, he did an amazing job. I just think we need him.
And I do work with him, and I agree.
And I did wo- work with him, and I agree. Any other comments?
Thank you, guys, that's all I need to know, because I don't know, and I appreciate it.
He did an amazing job, he's, he's really good.
I'm with you, yeah.
All right. He's very thorough.
With that, unless there's objection, we'll call the vote on that.
Right.
Um, do you want roll call on this, clerk, or not? You often have preference on it, that's why I ask you. All in favor of nomi- uh, appointing, uh, Phil Squattrito back to the Planning Commission for the term, um, shoot, bear with me.
Oh. Oh.
Three, two, uh, I mean, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-six.
Ending two fifteen, twenty twenty-six, thank you. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, Jessica Lap, um, has had her first term there, um, my understanding from, uh, those that work with the Planning Commission is, is, uh, she's started to learn the ropes and is applying herself, so I'd like to renominate, uh, Jessica Lap to the Planning Commission with a term ending February fifteenth, twenty twenty-six.
Support.
Um, motion by the supervisor, support by Bills, further discussion?
She's wonderful to work with.
And I haven't had a chance to work with her, and I'm thinking you haven't either, but so I'm gonna take...
She's absolutely wonderful.
Wonderful. Any other discussion? All in favor of appointing Jessica Lap to the Planning Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Jessica Lap appointed to the Planning Commission. The other two individuals...
Two fifteen, twenty twenty-six, did you say that?
Yeah.
Two fifteen, twenty twenty-six. The, the other two individuals, um, I really didn't know, um, and so I did some asking around and creeping and all of that stuff, so with that, um, I, I can't give a personal recommendation for either of the two candidates that applied that we haven't talked about already. But in what information I could find, I would like to nominate Nivea McDonald to the Planning Commission for a term ending February fifteenth, twenty twenty-six.
Support.
Uh, motion by the supervisor for nomination, um, support by the Clerk Cody. Um, anybody else know either of these individuals?
Mm-mm. I know Kayla. Briefly. Kayla Slezak.
Okay, anything?
She's a hard worker, that's all I know.
Okay, so I, I didn't have a lot to go on, other than my, um, my research on them and asking around.
She's a decent person, but I don't know her very well.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor of the motion or nomination to appoint Nivea McDonald, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Spiration two fifteen, twenty twenty-six.
Correct. Nivea McDonald appointed to the Planning Commission unanimously. We do have some EDA, uh, seats coming up, I mentioned those last time, um, some of the current members have re-upped for those spots.
Yay.
Um, yep, I'm very grateful for that, um, but we're not in an urgency to do that, and it's always, it's nice to leave those opportunities for others to serve and apply, so we'll address those, uh, soon. With that, uh, that takes us to board member reports. Um, I'll start with Clerk Cody, she's raising her hand.
Yeah, I figured I'd start here, right. So I went to the last road commission meeting, I apologize, I didn't bring all my notes, and I had, like, all detailed, but they did do their audit, and everything looked good on that, and they went through everything on that, so that's the one thing that really stuck out, so, they, everything looks good, numbers, numbers-wise, I guess. I don't know, that's about it, yeah.
Good news.
Trustee Thering?
No, we meet like, uh, two weeks from now.
And I'll skip me now, too, because EDA's often, and PC, uh, covered by our community director. Um, Trustee Bills?
Yes, I, I believe I've attended two Board of Commissioner meetings since I've seen you guys last. Uh, the one on January seventeenth, I attended the work session. Um, it was, there wasn't a lot, but they did say that they closed on the loan for the sheriff's office for the new jail, uh, on December sixth, and that there may, they may be able to start construction early if it's a mild winter, so they're hoping that they can get started on that. Uh, and then, uh, I attended the one on February seventh, and, um, I did, uh, our, our Commissioner, um, Angler, Commissioner Angler, he's on the, uh, Isabella Conservation District, and he announced that they're gonna ha- be having a seminar on how to grow fruit trees in April. It's gonna be in clear, in case anybody wants to know, it's on their website or Facebook page or something, uh, so that's pretty cool. And then, um, uh, oh, yeah, and they talked about the master plan, they had to put Union Township back in and Saginaw Chickaway Indian Tribe because their san- sanitary systems were left out of their master plan. So, that's about it, that's the only thing that involved us. And then I went to the MTA meeting on January eighteenth, which was really cool because our, our, uh, state senator was there, Roger Houck. Jerry Nyer was supposed to be there, but he couldn't make it because he was, he's a freshman, and they made him stay in Lansing. So, but he's, he did talk a lot about what's coming up, and he said that, uh, he will keep us all informed, and he gave everybody his cell phone number, so, it's pretty cool. That's all good.
Um, city commission meeting Monday, so we haven't had a meeting since our last meeting, it'll be this Monday.
Very good. Move... Moving on, um, Consent Agenda, and just a note as always, uh, we do have a contract within the Consent Agenda. Just to make sure you, you see that.
Yeah.
So with that, I'm happy to entertain any motions regarding the Consent Agenda.
I'd like to move to appro- approve the Consent Agenda, please.
Support.
Motion by Bills, support by Cody.
Was the update, I know we got an update email from Kim, was that, is that in the packet?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I believe Tara resented that out. And I attached it to the email. The cost did not change, it's just.
Right.
The, the cost of the project did.
Right.
But the township's cost did not change.
I just wanted to make sure that you did it, thank you.
Yeah, the packet was updated.
We'll make sure we signed the right one. You guys go for it.
Right, right.
From what I saw, Tara did update the packet, so that's what the public sees now.
Yeah.
And that, and we resented that second packet. Who had warrants?
I did.
Oh, did you say that already, I missed it?
I'm satisfied.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I was just waiting.
All right, we have a motion on the Consent Agenda for approval, any other discussion? This is a roll call vote, because we do have a resolution in there. Clerk Cody, would you do a roll call vote of the Consent Agenda approval?
Supervisor Mulkey?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Trustee Bills? Yes. Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes.
That brings us to new business, uh, we have second reading and adoption of the twenty twenty-two zoning ordinance text amendments.
Thank you for approving that vote, project. Talk to you later, thank you.
All right.
With that, um, Mr. Nanny, do you have anything to introduce on this?
Uh, I do not have anything to.
Okay, the board should be familiar with this, this is our second reading. Happy to take any questions to our acting manager or entertain any motions.
A motion to conduct the second reading of the proposed PTXT twenty-two dash oh one zoning ordinance amendments and to adopt the ammendatory ordinance as ordinance number twenty-three dash oh two.
Support.
Motion by Cody, support by Bills. Questions, comments?
I do, having a member of the public come in and ask a couple of questions, it's not something that I personally, you know, I've seen this, I don't know how long I've seen this, it's not something I would catch, because I don't get into that part of that. Is, is it possible to answer those questions tonight?
Ask it.
Well, the que- one of the question was, if I, if I understood correctly, and I apologize if I don't have it right, but does an entity have the ability to go to the ZBA for an interpretation before coming to staff with a plan? I hope I got, that was, that was the best I could come up, sorry, Ben.
The, I, I can answer that question, the answer is yes. The, the clarification is to bring the, the text of our ordinance more in, uh, more in line with the state act. And the addition is, is to say that when the, when an interpretation is made by either the zoning administrator or the Planning Commission, uh, that that should be not treated as an, as an interpretation to the ZBA, but rather an appeal of administrative action. In the case of the Thrive Church, there was no administrative action and so they, they simply went directly to the zoning board of appeals, which the amendment would continue to allow them to do.
And I mean, I wasn't referencing anything to do with the Thrive Church, I was more of looking at if somebody had the ability to.
Yes, absolutely, that, that would continue to be the case.
Okay. And then? Like, it's just really, that's the only other, that's all I had.
I'll, I'll ask the other one.
Please.
Because I appreciate the questions that were there and I think, um, um, it's good information for all of us to have. Can you speak to the administrative process, I believe is how it was put? The, the reference from the, Mr. Gunning was that it, uh, isn't defined, can you just address that concern at all?
So the, well, there are various administrative processes in the ordinance. Uh, it's not a defined term, because there simply are various actions that are taken, uh, are put in the hands of the, the zoning administrator or the Planning Commission. Interestingly, the Planning Commission is an administrative body, uh, so a site plan approval is an administrative action under the zoning ordinance. So there are, there are a number of administrative actions that, that would apply to that. And they're all defined, each one is defined in the ordinance, who has authority, what the process is.
Thank you. Does that satisfy this board from what they heard? As a question?
I'm fine.
Okay. Appreciate you being here to answer those questions. Hopefully that addresses the questions that were brought up in public comment. Uh, with that, I'm happy to entertain any additional comments, comments, questions? Seeing none, uh, clerk Cody, we have a, a roll call vote, please, to approve PTXT twenty-two dash oh one zoning ordinance amendments. For, I'm sorry, for second reading and, uh, you, your motion was to approve as well, right?
Yes, yep.
Would you do roll call, please?
Supervisor Mulkey?
Yes.
Sorry, I had to skip over Tru- trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes.
Motion approves unanimously, that moves us to item eleven B on our agenda. Drinking water revolving fund and clean water revolving fund project plans. Mr. Nanny, do you have anything you'd like to add on this?
Thank you, I do have just a couple of comments, this, this is a part of the process that has been underway for some time. The board members will remember the last September, uh, we enjoyed a, a detailed presentation from Jennifer Hodges, from Gordy Frazier, about these, these programs, that this is, uh, a pot of money that, that is available to us, uh, through the state of Michigan that ultimately originates with federal funds, uh, that is available for major projects, for our water and our sewer systems. The, uh, this is another step, uh, forward in, in the process of being able to seek that funding, which is, uh, as, as noted in the request for board action, uh, in, in our previous, uh, presentation. Gives us this opportunity for access to very low-interest loans and potentially, potentially in some cases, forgivable loans, uh, for, for significant infrastructure projects. We have it every year in our budget, part of our budget, uh, cycle, we, uh, we have a capital improvements program that, that is part of that. All of the, the projects are envisioned by, by, uh, potentially by, uh, for use by these funds are part of our capital improvements program. And, uh, as I said, this is simply the next step in the process is to have, uh, our, our township engineering firm, Gordy Frazier, prepare the, the documents that are necessary and the plans that are necessary to, to move forward, uh, to apply ultimately, apply and seek those, that funding. We have with us, uh, Public Services Director, Kim Smith, who can answer any detailed, any questions you have. We also have on Zoom tonight, uh, I guess I can sort of introduce, we have Jennifer Graham, uh, on Zoom tonight and I ask her permission to, uh, to announce that she is recently married, so she was Jennifer Hodges, she's now Jennifer Graham.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
She's on Zoom tonight to answer questions as well.
Thank you. Uh, any questions for our acting manager, comments? Yes, clerk Cody?
You said this was state ARPA funding, correct?
It, it comes through the state of Michigan, through the, the drinking water fund and the, the clean water fund. It, the, the, the money flowed down to the state from the federal government, uh, through, through federal action, in part through the American Rescue Plan Act, uh, but, uh, the, the money is, is distributed, uh, and managed by the state of Michigan through those two funds.
Yeah, so for clarity, the ARPA referenced in here is not Township ARPA.
Right.
That's correct.
Any other ques- sorry?
I.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Trustee Bills?
I was just gonna throw my two cents in and say, I'm just sorry we're not borrowing more.
Yeah.
Trustee Brown?
I'd like to make a motion, if we're all set.
Yep.
Consideration, I'd like to make a motion, consideration to approve the contract for professional engineering services between Gordy Frazier and the Charter of Township of Union in the amount of eighty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to complete the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, CWSRF, and the DWRF, Drinking Water Revolving Fund project plans and authorize the township manager to sign the contracts.
Support.
Motion by Brown, support by Cody. Any additional comments, questions?
This is an awesome, awesome program, I can't wait.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Yeah, thank you, Jennifer.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I just want to reiterate, I appreciate having this outlet as an avenue for me to attend remotely and it's truly appreciated, so I thank you for that too and it just allows you to know that I'm here and available at any time, so. And I appreciate you signing and approving our contract and looking forward to us some, potentially accessing some low-interest, uh, loan. So thank you again, guys.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sorry to put you through a long meeting already, just for this part. Congratulations too, I don't know if you heard from other members, but they were also congratulating.
I did, thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, seeing no further comments or questions, clerk Cody, would you do a roll call vote on the, uh, approval of the contract for professional engineering services between Gordy Frazier and Charter Township of Union in the amount of eighty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, uh, to complete the Clean Water State Revolving Fund and Drinking Water Revolving Fund project plans?
Supervisor Mulkey?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes, trustee Thering?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
All yeses?
Motion passes unanimously, that brings us to new business, item eleven C, added to the agenda. Discussion, or I should say introduction by trustee Bills regarding, uh, the possibility, trying to state this right, possibility of a grant committee and/or staff or consultant to aid in applying for grants, is that a reasonable description?
Yes, and.
And you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Well, I am so excited to have, uh, trustee Smith, another trustee, wait, Brian Smith and Jeff Brown, okay. Snas Smith.
You forget my name again?
I called him Smith like the third meeting, and now his nickname is Smitty.
Save this for final board member commer- comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're supposed to be on your grant committee staff.
Yeah, I know, but I am really excited to have trustee Smith, uh, that our new incoming trustee with so much obvious grant experience. But, uh, we, we.
It was related then.
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
I was going somewhere with it, but then it occurred to me, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're okay.
I was looking just a random, you know, internet search for companies that provide grant services and I, there are a number of them and I'd like to see if somehow the township, either through us or through, through the manager or something, could look into possibly, uh, getting some proposals from these people as to how much, how much it would cost us or whatever, or the differences in different firms or whatever. And that we could, I would be willing to work on it if I had the authorization from the board, uh, and, uh, or, or work with anybody else on it, you know? So I mean, I don't know what you guys think about that, but I think it's time that we start accessing some money. The county access is a heck of a lot of money from different agencies every year. These are recurring grants they get, just every single year they get them and they just, it's like clockwork. So, I mean, I think it's something that would really benefit the township in a number of ways. And with infrastructure, with parks, uh, with other things and, uh, you know, even, you know, if we had a grant writer, we could probably get somebody to apply for that sheriff's position, you know?
Can I make a suggestion?
Well, yeah.
Okay, so, um, I like your idea. Maybe what we need to articulate is a policy to that effect, that, that is a desire this board wants. I think you stated it well, but I think to, to accomplish it, we maybe look, look at a policy that directs the organization to make sure that we're taking the opportunities that are there. With regards to our ends.
Yeah, and ends are coming up soon too, right? So we can add that to ends too, I'm thinking, you know, in the end.
I had similar thought earlier when you asked to add this, that we could consider that. But that would, that would be a formal way of actually making it something that, um, you know, is, the organization understands this is a priority, because.
Yeah.
I'm supportive of your idea and that, so I'm not expecting that you wanted action tonight, you wanted to introduce the topic, right?
All I wanted to do was bat it around a little bit and see where, where everybody was at, because we haven't had a chance to do that and I think that it's something we might want to consider doing for the township, I think it could be beneficial.
And our new trustee could join the discussion the next time.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, I think that would be helpful and helping.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess I would.
Clerk, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Clerk Cody?
I mean, I have, you know, being the clerk's a little different, but I've reached, or I've done some grants, or I didn't write them, but I sought out grants to get like the high-speed tabulator and we got the money to pay for that. I mean, I do search and things like for that, just, you know, but I mean, it's hard, but I'm, you know, it's doable.
But it isn't your job and the thing is.
I mean, it was, I thought I was doing my.
You do a great job, you're an outstanding clerk and everybody says so.
Thanks.
But it might be nice to have some, some form of support mechanism, um, for staff to, to find as a resource when they see opportunities.
Yeah.
Because I, I would guess, I'm guessing here, um, without talking to our manager, that our staff probably doesn't have the resources currently to be able to do what you're describing.
I think that's pretty clear.
Right.
I mean, I definitely think it's worth looking into, because there's a lot of money out there.
Yeah, and there's going to be in the next couple of years with ARPA coming to a close in twenty twenty-six. Has to be earmarked by the end of twenty-four, so.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna speculate too, like in water and sewer, Gordy Frazier, I think, and you can correct me if you think I'm wrong in this. Gordy Frazier, I think is probably, plays that role in your department, is that reasonable?
Yeah, they do, yeah.
Yeah.
We play that role together, but they, they support, you know, just like these project plans, those have to be done by a licensed engineer, so they play their role and when opportunities come up, um, we work on those opportunities together, yes.
Okay. Hopefully our manager's also watching this meeting, so he knows we want to have this discussion.
He's not watching.
Not, not tonight maybe, but I'm hopefully like you later.
I guess that's what I was gonna kind of say, uh, being a trustee, um, I haven't got into the weeds of how Union Township writes grants or what our process is and, and, and all that, I mean, really what the process is, um, on, on this grant writing and what, are we missing, what we're missing, uh, I, I guess I don't know. So, on behalf of the manag- manager, if he does watch, uh, um, that would be something that, I guess, hopefully we could get some answers on exactly how that process works a little thoroughly.
Yeah, because.
For me, I mean, maybe everybody else knows, I just don't understand that process thoroughly on, on Union Township's grant.
I would like to understand that too better.
Much more thorough than the little bit that I understand now, um, about it, so.
Trustee Bills?
Well, I was just gonna mention that when I see this come through the, uh, county board, uh, every grant that, that gets applied for or, or, you know, gets accepted, the board has to approve it. So I haven't seen any of that coming through here in two years, so I don't think we do grants.
We, we have.
Oh, we have, yeah.
We have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that, in the county, they all, they approve all this stuff.
I'm just, just on the, the Lincoln Brewfield project, for example, and I pick on that one because it's big. There was a lot of different grant, uh, buckets of money that went into that. And that was a partnership with Union Township and the Road Commission.
Yeah.
Applying for grants, that happens all the time.
Okay.
And, and so it may not always be obvious.
It isn't. So then I asked the manager, I made the manager aware of a grant six weeks before the paperwork was due for, of the full cost of an outdoor recreation facility in, in an existing park, literally written for our project that we're doing this spring, and he didn't apply for it. We could have had two hundred thousand dollars. I can't tell you, I wanted to, I wanted to quit, that's where I was at when that didn't get done. Didn't even, didn't even lift a finger on that and then acted like I was the only one that was concerned.
Well, I'm happy to support you in wanting to have this discussion further and take this the next step. I'm assuming there's no objections from other members?
No.
No, I'm full support.
Actually, a couple of weeks ago, I stopped in and talked with the manager on a few subjects and one of them was to better understand the grant writing, because you've talked about that a couple of times and, again, that's one thing that I, that's not my expertise, so I just stopped in to ask from a township standpoint. So I think it would be really helpful before we as a board develop a policy to see where the manager is and how that operates. And it allow us to develop a policy, even if it totally changes the way they go to business, but to be able to give them the support to be successful at it.
Right, I think that's key, the support, and if we don't communicate with the manager on that and he didn't communicate anything back to me at all within that six week. within that six-week period, and I offered to help, I don't understand. But again, I'm one board member, I don't have any authority, and so he just blew me off. I get that, but I think that we need to decide if we can support the township in getting grants so that we can get grants and make the township better. That's all I'm looking forward to, if we can do it.
Appreciate you bringing it up.
Thank you, sir.
Any, any other on this topic?
I, I just think on behalf, if I, I mean, the manager's not here to speak for himself. I, I don't think he blew you off. I think it was one trustee going to the manager, and it didn't, it didn't have the, it didn't have the power that it needed.
Yep.
So, I, I, you know, because I, but, you know, I just, I wanted to be fair there. I just, I want to be fair for Mark on that.
I mean, some things, I had to work with Sherry when I got the grant monies, because there was like COVID monies, and you can't overlap the monies, so we had to put everything together and line it up perfectly in order to get that grant money, because you cannot double dip.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there's a lot into that, so I mean, maybe he didn't do it because his money's coming from somewhere else or a different grant, or we got grant money from something else. There's, there's numerous reasons it could have happened, but I'm just throwing that out there, so.
I, I had this-
You know, I mean, it's, there's a lot.
And I had similar conversations with our manager about grants, and I know there are cases where the manager or the staff looked at grants, decided not to pursue them because of certain strings that we were not willing to agree to, that, that the money wasn't worth the responsibility with, with that grant. But I do want to know more, and if we can support our staff better, I think that's great.
So, if we could speak with Mark about this one, about the grants, and say it's one of our requests, because I think we should request some more information about this, too.
Reasonable. Did you hear enough from us to articulate this? Thank you, trustee Bills.
I did.
Thank you.
Sure, please.
In terms of just grant, recent grant activity, I've been involved in, one of them is the Outdoor Fitness Center, where we applied for and were awarded ultimately fifty thousand dollar grant that became part of your approval action on-
That was thirty.
Uh, okay, I apologize.
That's okay.
You're right. It was thirty. There were two options. You're right.
Okay.
Uh, the other one, though, that I wanted to mention, recently, the, the state had the SPART grants. It's a recreation grant program. And we are cooperating with the, the city of Mount Pleasant on their pathway project out to Mission Creek Park. And you, you can, you may recall, we just had a resolution of support. And as part of that request for board action, we included the budget information from the city, which noted that they were applying for a SPART grant, I believe it was a half million dollars. And so, it's, it's a case of if the township had also applied for a SPART grant, we would essentially be competing with a project we're cooperating, collaborating on with the city for those same funds. And so, part of the, the element with any grant is to be strategic in choosing when to apply, when not to. And in this case, we were supporting the city's application for those SPART grant funds.
Okay, well, that makes sense.
Yeah.
If anybody would have actually just got back to me and said, you know what, I looked into that, can't do it. But no, I don't get that, so that's why I'm frustrated there, you know. And I did follow it up with emails and never got a response from the manager, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your response.
Are we good? To move on?
Is there something you think we'll see? I mean, I don't, this is a great discussion. I would hate to lose it.
I would like to see it in the near future. You had that in there, too?
I'll, I'll, I'll mention it to Mark, too, and say ideally within the next month, if that, because I, I know Mark will need to prepare for that.
Absolutely.
And I think, I think that's probably a reasonable timeframe. If it needs to be different, then we'll, I'll ask Mark to communicate that.
I just don't want to lose the momentum we have here. We've got a nice conversation going. We have a trustee with tons of experience coming on board, and we definitely need to hear from our manager before we develop a policy that can be supportive of grant writing.
We're not trying to usurp or anything, other than provide better support.
This, you know, people know what's going on in the building, you know, and putting the agenda, you know, items on the agenda on the Facebook page so that people can see it. I, I, I feel like I'm the only person in this township that actually pays attention, to be frank with you. There are other people that do, because I think the only thing, they, they under, they find out things about the township, because I, I tell them. You know, and, and I think that that needs to get better. I think that the communication needs to be better. I think him bringing that up was, was very appropriate, and, and I think it's something you guys should discuss. You know, it's not that hard to do, and it's not that expensive, so. But otherwise, thank you very much, and like I said, I think that the questions that you guys asked were, were very good, too. And I, I appreciate that. The last time around, I, I felt that the, that it was, you brought in a very solid individual at that time and place. It was very experienced, but the discussion was terrible. I felt the decision was already made before we walked in the room, and I liked the way you guys handled it. So, much better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Schur, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, South Commission. I do appreciate the discussion and the rationale behind why you made the choice, and can fully agree with it. Certainly, like I said, absolutely zero qualms about anybody who was on that list, particularly that man. And, as well as Mr. Lannan. The, the thing I wanted to comment, though, was having had almost forty years of various kinds of planning, master planning, upgrading planning, and all sorts of other stuff, as well as grant writing, I've forgotten, way more than I can ever remember. Your explanation on how that worked and how it does work in collaboration is really important, so you're spot on. And I will strongly recommend that you go back to all your respective advisory boards and commissions and make sure that you have a freshly compiled wish list that you could tag on to any plan that you are going to put out for the public to look at. Because if you're really serious about going after every grant that's out there for review, not necessarily applying, because that's not a good thing, that it's gotta be in that plan someplace. And the more collaborative effort that you have with your surrounding townships and the city, the more likely that you are to receive positive grant information. Michigan law is very proactive, very encouraging of, of collaborative planning. The law literally says that you can plan with anybody that you share a border with. Well, for practical purposes, you cover the state, I mean, if you want to continue the daisy chain. What, what we did in Gracia County, which Brian knows about, is we did a universal master plan where essentially we all had the same basic tenants of the plan, and everybody had a chapter that went into it. And it could be as broad or as narrow as that individual township or unit of government chokes. Kind of a ground up, everybody gets involved. And one of the things that I found doing economic development was the nomenclature of your plan and your mapping structure, the closer it is with everybody else's, the more favorable you are considered for locations for new business and industry. That's, if you figure it out.
Wow.
You know, we, we think we live in a big place. We don't. We live in a Midwest market that's part of the North America, that, et cetera, et cetera. So, the easier it is to make you conform and be good and fast and simple to do business, the better off you are. And so, going out and getting your wish list from all the citizens around is a really good idea.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Brian Smith, twenty-two, eighty-four, Sandstone Drive. Just quickly want to say thank you for the questions and the opportunity to stand in front of you. I respect one hundred percent everybody's decision tonight. That's the way you feel. That's great. I, you know, you had, you know, great thought behind it and everything, so I'm looking forward to working with this board as soon as possible.
Yay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing-
Jennifer Hodges had her hand up, but it's down now. I'm not sure if she still would like to speak.
Jennifer Graham, you had your hand up, did you need to speak?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And nobody else requesting? Seeing no one else coming forward, we'll close extended public comment at nine thirty-one PM. That brings us to managers' comments. We have an acting manager to this meeting. Do you have anything that you'd like to say?
I do have one item of, of information to share. I recently attended a pre-construction meeting for the MDOT reconstruction project along M-20, East Pickard Road. And just want to give you an update on that. Two items. Number one, the anticipated start date for that project is March, March sixth. You'll see things gradually happen beginning on March sixth, but it is going to happen pretty quickly following that date. There, the MDOT is holding a public open house, so if you'd like to come to their offices, their offices are at twelve-twelve Corporate Drive. February twenty-seventh from four PM to six PM, they will have the plans, they will have the, the personnel to be able to have any of your questions answered, or just simply to, to, to review the, what they're proposing to do. So, that, again, that open house is February twenty-seventh from four to six PM at the MDOT office.
Thank you. So, that's a Monday, by the way. I was just looking.
Yes.
Is it Monday?
Yes, trustee Bills.
Manager nanny, I would like to ask you if that project is gonna let, how long that's, was that till November?
So, the, the project is, is two years, and the portion in the township, which is basically from the, the US One Twenty Seventh Interchange, where they're going to be doing bridge work, that's going to extend to west to Packard Street, basically the city line. That's, that's all going, supposed to happen in twenty-twenty-three. The, under the contract, the contractor is required to complete the twenty-twenty-three work by November fifteenth. And then in twenty-twenty-four, work would begin at Packard Street and head west to, to, up to and including the Mission Street intersection.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much.
Any other questions on that? Moving forward to item fourteen on the agenda, final board member comment. I ended with you, so we'll start with you.
Start with me?
Start with you, trustee Brown.
Well, I gotta say, it was excellent meeting tonight. What excellent conversations from all of you. I appreciate the respect. I respect each and every one of you. We had excellent, excellent applicant for this position, so I want to congratulate Mr. Smith, and I look forward to working with you. And I think, I think, I, I think that's wonderful, and again, I appreciate, I appreciate the conversations tonight, guys. Thank you.
Trustee Bills?
I'd like to echo that, too. Trustee Brown is exactly right. This board gets along very well. And even though we don't agree on every single thing, we understand that that's because we are all different people. So, I really, congratulations to Brian, and I don't have anything else. I won't be here at the next meeting. I'm going on another vacation because I can.
Okay, so, if I can follow up on that briefly, then I'm gonna recommend to our manager that if, if he was being preparing for the grant discussion at that meeting, I prefer that you be there.
I think he's gonna be away, too, isn't he? He's got another vacation.
He does have another one coming up. I didn't remember the date, but I'll try to make sure. I would like you to be there, since you introduced the topic.
Thanks, appreciate that, sir.
Trustee Thering?
I always appreciate somebody saying something opposite of what I'm thinking, just so you have the full scope of what's around you. I'm very confident, I was very confident in my decision with Mr. Smith. Glad to, happy to be working with him, so.
By the way, I'm smiling at you. You can't tell.
No, no, you're good.
I, I, I'm sick, and I don't want to share.
I want to thank the other applicants for applying. They're absolutely good people and qualified to do the job. So, thank, that being said, that's, I'm good.
Clerk Cody?
Congratulations, Mr. Smith, and I do want to comment on Gunning's comment about the social media. I do know when we're looking into that, if we look into it, that there's a retention schedule, and it's part of the charter, or charter. So, we have to be very careful on what we post on social media, because you have to keep it for so long, and then keep the comments so long, and then kind of, there's certain rules and regulations on things like that, so it's just kind of-
Well, but it's digital, so, right?
You still have to keep it. Somehow, you have to keep a record of it.
Well, we keep, don't we keep that-
Like Facebook page is what I'm saying. Like a Facebook page, if you have a page, you have to keep proof of everything that was said, everything that was posted. Either keep that physical part of it for, I believe it's a year, depending on what it is, or it's-
Or just keep the page up in perpetuity.
Yes.
How about that?
Yes, but you have to keep it backed, like, or you can delete things after a year kind of thing, is what I'm saying. It's just tricky, is all.
Well, Facebook is a private company. They can choose to co-shop if they wanted, or-
Hundred percent.
Yeah, I mean.
I'd like to see that happen. That'd be great.
Does anybody use it anymore?
Yeah, I use it, I have, but my business, my business has a place page on it.
Old people.
Shut up!
I will, I will say, I'm sorry, clerk Cody, you're done?
Yes.
I, I will say, I, I really tried using Facebook for the purpose of communicating. I just can't be on Facebook anymore.
No.
It is not healthy for me. I don't think it's healthy for our society in many ways. And I know, I appreciate those that get something from it, and it's a great tool if used appropriately. But I just couldn't, I couldn't keep that up. And, and I agree that there, with Mr. Lannan and Mr. Gunning's comments, that we have to be creative in ways that we are able to communicate and reach out to ownership.
And that would be really economical. That would be really economical, too, because it's free.
I'm not saying I don't like the idea. I was just saying we have to be very careful on what we do.
I, I do want to just comment, we had some technical difficulties tonight because of a power outage in Union Township, and that was what caused some of the delay that we had.
That makes sense.
And, but I appreciate our technical director, for lack of a better term back there, making it all come together tonight, so thank you. But tonight was a great example of allowing this hybrid type of meeting where there was benefit to it. I wish Mr. Lannan had had video, able to work with it, but Jennifer Graham was here. And I, I just, I'm excited that this board made that a priority to make it happen. I've alluded three times tonight, and I don't mean to repeat, Brian and I met, Mr. Smith, excuse me, trustee-elect. Do we call you? Okay. And so, we had a great conversation. We talked about a lot of different things. One of the things that I heard from this, some of the members tonight, I want to reiterate, because I had shared that with Brian regarding this board. I, I served on three of the, this board and two previous boards in various capacities. And I can't say how much I appreciate the respect, as Mr. Trustee Brown mentioned. The decorum, the ability to listen to each other. I'm proud to be on this board. And I, I told Brian that if he got on, that he would experience that same thing, because he's, he and I both talked about being on various boards in the past that always weren't functional. Dysfunctional is maybe a better word, and I, I hope that your experience is exactly what I described to you. With that, get sworn in.
All right.
Okay, and I'll be happy to entertain any motions for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Support.
Motion by Brown, support by Bills. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.
Brown, don't leave yet either.
Brown, don't leave yet either.